Can we open up the meeting of the Woodbury Select Board for February the 13th, 2023? Our start time is 6:03 PM. So they have to call the meeting to order. We have two Select Board members present. Any adjustments to the Select Board agenda? Stephen Murphy was going to come and talk to us about pre-town meeting for the Friday get-together?
Saturday.
Saturday get-to- excuse me, Saturday get-to-.
Oh, no, there's also doing one on Friday, February 24th.
The 24th.
That's the school thing, right?
Yes.
And here he is.
Here he is, alright.
Alright, so.
Here's our adjustment to the agenda.
Can we make an adjustment to the agenda to make sure that Stephen Murphy has time to introduce his idea for a pre-town meeting on Friday the 24th?
Hmm, great idea.
And I would like to put that in at, after we have the Town Clerk's report and the Town Treasurer's report, so we'll do it, I'll shoot for it around 6:25 PM. Stephen, is that okay with you?
Yes, thank you.
That's my adjustment to the agenda.
Is Alp coming, do you know? Does anybody know?
This morning he said he was.
Yeah, okay, well, if he comes, we probably should, should let him go first. If Alp comes. But, if we're not done by, if we're done by 6:25, then that's good too.
Other adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none.
Wait, there might be one walking in. Oh. Public comment, maybe.
Hey.
Hello.
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 Hello, Steve. Great, good to see you.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Living.
We're just doing adjustments to the agenda, but we're not into public comment quite yet.
What was the agenda you're changing?
Let me give you a copy of the agenda.
We're just starting.
Tried to bring a light, but I couldn't, I couldn't find my headlight, brother.
Oh, Jesus.
They're talking about putting Stephen Murphy in right around 6:25 to talk about the pre-town meeting. Okay?
So if you want something that's not on the agenda, then you just tell us that now.
Just tell us. Team, okay?
Yep.
Alright. So, we'll move on to approving bills and payroll orders. Diana Peducey has looked through these. I have not yet, but they will be approved immediately after the meeting today. And we have approval of minutes from the January 3rd meeting. I've reviewed these. Diana's reviewed these as well. I am signing them right now. I've reviewed them. So these are both signed by 6:07. And we're open for public comment. Sir.
I'd like to make a comment, just to give some updates about some of the activities that the library is doing.
But that was what you were here for on the agenda?
This is different.
Different, yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention that the library is working on some promotions for town meeting and to increase participation in town government. And on February 21st, there'll be a speaker in Woodbury School Gym, that Susan Clark. She's an author, she's the moderator for the Town of Middlesex. That'll be February 21st at 6:30. And February 24th, we'll be having, in cooperation with the school, a mock town meeting at the school principal. And the teachers and students will be forming a, an agenda, likely with two questions, two articles. And we'll have a, a mock town meeting at the school, and some of the town officials will participate.
That's at 8:00 AM, correct?
8:00 AM, yep, yep, February 24th. And our library director, Myrna, has ordered and received some books on town meeting, civics and government. She'll be also working with Lisa in the school to hold the story hour. And then we have an event planned for March 4th for the pre-town meeting forum, and we'll talk about that later.
Do you have time for that?
Yeah.
So, Stephen, would you mind reviewing? Susan Clark is gonna come, what day?
February 21st. 21st to Tuesday, 6:30 at the school gym.
And that space is already set, right?
Yes.
And then we have our school student, elementary and middle school student, mock town meeting.
Yes, yep.
8:00 AM on February the 24th?
Yes.
Will any of the students be there?
Yes, yep.
Even though it's vacation?
I believe it's not on vacation. I believe vacation starts Monday.
Right, and it goes through town meeting?
It's February 24th.
24th.
So it's, it's the, it's the Friday before.
It's the last, it should be the last day of school.
Yes.
Okay.
It's the last day of school. So it's 8:00 AM on the last day of school.
And then vacation starts on the 27th.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, goes through the eight.
That works out really, really nicely. Excellent.
And lastly, I'd like to announce that the library will be holding pie breakfast. Pie breakfast returns, March 25th.
Wow.
We'll be talking about that at trustees' meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, 16th. So we're looking for volunteers, pie bakers, pie cutters, setup breakdown, so we're pleased that pie breakfast returns, so.
Absolutely.
So seeing everyone there. Thank you.
Lovely.
Hi.
Thank you, Stephen.
Hello, how we doing?
Yeah, you haven't missed much.
Any other public comment, Stephen? Alright, may we please have the Town Clerk's report?
The first thing is, I have received multiple complaints about a young lady walking door to door, requesting money and/or rides. And there was one residence where she tried to force herself in, so they now have a restraining order against her. A no one, no trespass order against her. And it's not just on Route 14, it's out on, up on East Hill and those roads also.
Do you have a name that goes with this? Are we allowed to say a name?
I don't think it's, you know, it's just a, I don't think it's anything we can do, but.
Alright, so that's fine.
It's a drug issue that it's, took in the next step.
It would seem like the person on the age tilt, but they care, that no problem.
The worst thing is, once you open your door, they come back and expect.
I've been watching for her, 'cause I got into that, sucked into that one time, yeah. And it helped her out, and it's, she was very polite and nice, but, you know, then I realized where she was going in there.
Okay. Okay, so we've had multiple complaints about that?
I guess the biggest thing for that is to call the state police, 'cause at this point, it's, it's.
It's hard for me to do that if I do not have a name, so we can do that in a different capacity. And that's fine, but.
If somebody comes knocking that is half-dressed and looks very strung out.
Strung out.
But doesn't wanna, doesn't want you to call the ambulance?
No, does not want a ride to rehab, no. Wants money for more, yeah. It's, it's, um, it's sad, but numerous people have come in, and they're scared.
Okay, so I will, I will make a statement to Washington County Sheriff's Office and the state police about people going door to door.
I will disclose names, yeah.
And that can be separate.
Off camera.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Turkey?
And I got an email from The World today, wanting to know if we want to post our town warning in The World paper.
Yes, please.
No, I don't think we do.
I do.
Got the whole thing? Because, I mean, some towns do, and you have to if you can't get your town report out in time.
We don't have to publish the entire thing, we have to publish the warning.
Well, the warning is the whole list of all the articles.
Yes, well, thirty-seven.
Articles.
Yeah, it's usually like this long for most towns.
How much is it gonna cost us to publish that? Do you have any idea?
That I don't know, I'll have to come and find out.
Would you find out?
Sure.
Because I would be in favor of publishing it.
Okay.
I'd like as much advocacy and awareness of this as possible. So if it's not gonna be exorbitant in terms of price, the world is so freely available, I'd like to have it out there.
Okay.
Alright, so.
I will file tomorrow.
But if you don't mind, I'd like some, I'd like a number first.
Okay.
But I would be in favor of it.
Okay.
Even though, even though Diana is not.
Oh, well. I'm only one vote out of two, so.
So, so.
We still have a couple of meetings.
But we will, we will figure it out. As soon as we knew, as soon as we have a number, then she and I can fight about it.
Yeah, whatever. No, if you feel strongly, that's fine with me.
That's alright, but let's talk, we'll talk about it after we have a number.
Okay. And some of the townspeople have received your town report yet? Me myself have not received one, but.
I have not received one.
But he might have taken us off the list.
I think he should say that, 'cause, yeah.
Because I don't like spending the money on getting one out.
So he should be getting.
Looks like Kenny got his. Did you get your town report?
Yeah, but if you don't have one, I don't either.
I scored two out of the trash at the post office today, so I'm all set. I got one for home, one for the office.
Oh, God.
It's pretty, nobody came and asked me why I was digging through the trash.
Gets darker and darker. Even though it's getting towards spring. Alright.
In the gym, I've got that all set aside for town meeting day.
Lovely.
So we're all set there. And for the pre-town meeting, I plan on going in Friday before and turning up the heat. So it's not super cold in there, 8 o'clock in the morning.
I'll be there Friday at 7:00. I agreed to be there, so I'll be there Friday at 7:00. If you're there 7:30, you know, or so, we get things set up.
Friday, oh, for.
See if we'll be there. We haven't actually brought this up yet, but it sounds like a good plan.
Friday at the school, for the school thing, you mean?
This is for our pre-town meeting.
Which is on Saturday.
Meeting.
Right, at the town hall.
At the town hall.
And then Stephen has got something set up before our pre-town meeting. So I wanna make sure that he is up, so we're.
Stephen's gonna talk about this.
Okay.
But, great, thank you.
Yeah, and that's what I have for today.
Lovely. Oh, we're right on time.
Yeah.
Can we have the Town Treasurer's report, please?
Um, I've given you your reports. Casher's seats, we took in $5,323.34. Three permits are coming in. We also have records restoration copies, dog licenses, required apartment insurance, a town hall rental, prepaid taxes. What went into direct deposit, Swenson's quarterly went in of $8,994.85. Direct deposit from the state of Vermont for traffic fines, $408.50. VHFA on delinquent taxes deposited $13,449.36. Payroll over the last three weeks, $13,673.61. And accounts payable of $16,518.6. What's still left to collect for delinquencies is $122,366.22. Bless you.
Got it.
So goodies, I'm applying for BLCT grant again for the $6,000 to try and get security cameras installed at the town office. So I'm working, Tim Higgins is gonna be getting me a typed-up quote. And then I'm gonna proceed to BLCT and see if I can get that done for this calendar year. Other goodies. Not much.
Tim's gonna give us a quote?
Yes.
How is it, is traffic out there still going on?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, at night?
Early in the morning also. You know, I saw somebody in talks the other day, he says, "I went by at 5:00 in the morning, and they were right out there pedaling."
I interrupted them the other day, when I worked late, so.
I dropped in at 9:00, I think, last night.
Yeah.
And it was a busy scene, so.
They did a drive-by, and then eventually left once. So I interrupted.
Yep, and so did I, apparently.
Yeah.
Not that they stopped doing anything they were doing, just kept going. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for applying for that grant. And maybe next time we meet, we will have a quote from Tim?
Oh, yes, yeah, we should by tomorrow morning.
Oh, lovely.
And we have the calendar year to, to get it completed. I would just rather have it sooner than later.
Well, when will they announce those grants again? I mean, like, when that guy.
It's on a calendar year, so as soon as I apply for it.
Oh, okay, so you don't have to wait till they come around?
It's, that grant is basically rolling.
Do you happen to know, and I'd love to get started on this, on the Valley Lake Road Grant, the $45,000?
Yep.
Do you have the backup to that?
Um, I have to, I have to talk to Michael.
You mean the one that Michael's working on, been working on?
I have to talk to Michael before I, I, you know.
So I've tried sending an.
I will, I will gently ask.
It's on hold, no, it's on hold.
Right now it's on hold?
It's on hold.
I'm afraid I don't have enough data to.
That's okay. I just wanted to create the RFP and get it started, get rolling.
Sorry about that.
But Michael knows the timeline, and he's, keeps saying he hasn't done any of it, he knows the timeline, right?
Well, we didn't put it on the budget for next.
It's not on the budget for next fiscal year.
So this year, yeah, right, yeah.
To find a contractor to get that design is crunch time.
Yeah, really.
I will, I will gently ask.
I gently tried, but.
I understand. Otherwise, we have to push it.
Yeah.
Sorry for that. Uh, Ms. Brandy, anything else?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay. So we're right on time so far. I'd like to ask Stephen Murphy to bring up his pre-town meeting discussion so that we can make sure that we're all set for that. Stephen, please.
Okay, thank you. So again, the library is gonna hold an event on March 4th, that's Saturday, from 8:45 AM to 9:45 AM. That will be immediately preceding the pre-town meeting informational forum. And the event the library will put on is called Town Meeting Talk. I'm sorry, Town Government Talk. And it will involve current and former town officials and members of the public getting together to ask and answer and discuss questions. A few, a few suggestions that came up at library trustees' meetings were, for example, what are the rules of procedure at town meeting? So we could discuss that. What are the roles of the town officials? We could discuss that. And then also, we'd like to encourage former and current town officials to, to talk about their experience in public service and serving in town and government. Tell stories, stories of hardship, stories of humor, so the, the whole range of human experience that comes with serving your town and government. So we'd like, like it to be informative, inspiring, and dare I say, fun, so.
To leave out the scary parts?
I don't think the hall, don't be thinking that for you, though.
Oh, okay, alright, we're gonna fill the hall.
And I think it would be a good opportunity to show appreciation for the people that, that have served and served the town, and maybe try to inspire more people to come out and, and take part in the public service and participate in our government, so.
Great.
That's our hope. And we'll be there at 8:30 for coffee and pastries for 15 minutes before the event starts. And we will, we'll attempt to get an organization to, to host that, the, the coffee and pastries. Maybe the Friends of WES, or maybe a group from Hazen, and they can use that as a fundraiser. And then the event will end at 9:45, and that will leave us 15 minutes to prepare and transition for the pre-town meeting forum. And that's that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you for helping us organize and get that together.
Great.
I think it's gonna be really useful for the people who actually do wanna be engaged.
Alright.
How can we make sure that it is well advertised?
Well, the library will be doing some promotions.
Okay.
We can, we can all spread the word. We have some public officials in the room, we can get started right here. We could fill seven or eight seats among us. And spread the word, encourage folks to come out. Yeah, and the, the library will be doing some advertising. If you have any ideas.
Ms. Turkey, do we have any, any, any funds that are available for general advertising? I think we do, right?
Yeah, and your financial statement?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We have, we've got Trent Porch's forum and your Facebook page that are free.
FDF, Facebook.
Yep.
Right, but do we have, can we, can, can we put this in any other location, public?
You were at the chair, you have something.
Well, I mean, no.
We could put it on the bulletin board by the post office.
No, that's not like, right, so we can.
In the locked-in glass one, so the wind doesn't blow it away.
Right, so we can put it up. A schedule of these different events, we could put it up at the office.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Put it up right there.
And maybe the school will attach it in their newsletter that goes home.
And that's what I was thinking as well, is that maybe it can go in the school newsletter. So are you comfortable with me asking OSSU about putting that into the regular Woodbury school newsletter?
Yes, please.
At least it goes to the 1,100 kids, parents that we have around.
Yes, please.
Is that reasonable?
And I'll keep you, Robin, and Chris updated about the advertisements and promotions, yeah.
Okay.
Is somebody gonna make a little poster?
Sure, I will.
No, I mean, no, it's somebody that, among your group that does graphics.
Well, I think that actually, what would be more fun is, because the students are actually involved and part of this, students can make some stuff.
Not the staff, not doing, Saturday.
I'll work on that, I'll work on that.
Is anybody, are you involved at all in the attempt to have childcare for town meeting day?
No.
No.
No. I don't have any updates on that.
Okay.
I did wanna say one more, one more item, we're working on this also. We got permission from Hardwood Community Television, I greatly appreciate that, to use portions of past videos of Woodbury's town meetings. We could produce from, from those videos some still frames, some photographs, and we'll have an exhibit at some of these events. My son is working on that, and I'll work on that with him. And also, I spoke to Elizabeth Dow, she's the director of the Hardwood Historical Society. I was wondering if they had some historical photos of Woodbury's town meeting? She said they didn't, but she led me to, through Vermont, my, my Vermont Gov website. It's a public site, where you can create an email or an account and get access to old digitized versions of the Hardwood Gazette going back to, I believe it's 1891.
Wow.
So there, we'll be taking some excerpts from those old newspapers that have articles about the town meetings, Woodbury town meetings. And then they start featuring photographs in the 1960s. And we're, we'll, we'll try to get some excerpts from those photographs, and some articles, and take some photographs of what current town meeting, and make an exhibit. And just try to bring, bring, bring the history with us as we move forward, and try to.
Sheila Neal or Carolyn Stewart, whether our historical society might have some.
I spoke to Sheila.
Okay.
She said she didn't have anything specifically about town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but if anyone else out there does, and would like to loan them or lend them, yeah, we'd be happy to exhibit those too, so.
I recently was doing some research and went back into the annals of the, what's that book called, the record, they're not the land records, but they're the general miscellaneous records, and they have old town meeting agendas and things, lots of interesting stuff. I mean, the people, Ken probably knows this, they used to pay people to put fry in the rivers, in the ponds. They used to pay people, no, that was before your time even. There's several, several entries where people were being paid for fry, and I said, "What the heck is that?" So finally, I looked up at one of them, and it was about stocking fish. Anyways, interesting stuff.
Stephen?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you all.
We're right on time, or according to my watch, we're on time. Can we have, Alfie, can we have the road commissioner's report, please?
Sure. Pretty much business as usual. We've had some weather that we've been working on, obviously. The, not huge thing, but big thing that's coming up is Greg's going for an operation, as we all know. So he's starting to, his appointments are starting to be scheduled. So we've got that to look, look forward to. David Pike has been on board, he's coming when one, one of us is out, he's there to fill that spot. So I think we're in good shape there.
How long is Greg expecting to be out?
Uh, it's really unknown.
Okay. Depends on, depends on, depends on what happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe it's scheduled for March 10th, is when he goes in. But there's, you know, there's a bunch of appointments coming ahead of that, where he'll have to be gone for a day or so. So just kind of bracing my feet for that. Like I said, Dave's willing and ready to come to work when we need him. That will be right around mud season, so gonna need somebody to drive a truck for sure, to bring gravel and whatnot, so. But we'll deal with it, we'll handle it.
Are you using Ed Rowell at all?
Anywho.
Are you Ed Rowell at all?
Uh, no, Ed is not with us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he decided he didn't wanna do it anymore. So it's, it's down to Dave.
How are you on materials? How are we on salt, sand?
Good, I just ordered a little salt yesterday, uh, this morning, actually. And so that will, they're really good about breaking it. So we're in good shape there.
Great.
Sand piles in fine shape, a lot of chunks because of the coal, but we're just handling them, moving them aside. Trucks are holding in there, maybe we've had a couple breakdowns, the oldest one, the 2013. But we've managed to get it back together and still going.
Okay.
The one thing on the agenda is that I've negotiated with Hardwood. And I think we've come to a pretty good deal. And I think we've come to a pretty good deal. Uh, I don't know if you want me to explain that, or-
Did you get this, did she?
Yeah.
Have you one of these?
I think it'd be great if you explained it.
Okay, um, so I met with, with the Hardwick Town Manager a couple of different times, talking about West Woodbury. And we have come to an agreement that he will plow it and give us two gratings in the summer, for six thousand dollars. And they have already started, that started, uh, a little over a week ago. And so, because we're halfway through the winter, he thought that he should get paid for half of the amount. So the amount, the six thousand that we agreed on is for next year. So, it only seems fair that we pay him for half of this year, um, which would be three thousand dollars. And I don't know if a bill has come from them.
Nope.
Yeah, he said, he said he was gonna send one, so when that comes, I think, we just pay that three thousand and that takes care of this winter, and then next, next, whenever we sign a contract with them, which we should, and I see we've got a draft.
They're drafted, right.
So we can, uh, finalize that, and they'll sign it, and we'll move forward. I've assured him that if he needed anything, any gravel or anything like that, that's on us, we have to provide the gravel for the grading. But just to have him grade it, them to grade it, in the, you know, twice throughout the summer, is a huge savings for us. That's, that's, I mean, I've done the math as far as the hourly and just driving the hour for, with a grader up there, forty-five minute, whatever it is. So, um, I'm happy that we have come to an agreement there. And they have also agreed to let everything in the past wash. So they're not charging us for anything that was-
If they think we owe.
In the gray area or whatever, right, so, uh, he was pretty happy about that as well.
So, was it your math that convinced them that their math was so wrong? Or did they do their own?
Yes, I believe it was, I went up there and I explained-
Last year they were wanting like fifteen thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right. And that's just, that was too much, I mean, I, I, I had it all spelled out, when she, and I went into his office, and I said, this is what I come up with, now, how do you? So I think the twelve or fifteen thousand dollars that they were talking about was from back years, where they thought that they weren't getting their money's worth.
Oh.
From the trade or the handshake, I don't know if you know what they had. So, I, I told him, look, I wanna start fresh, I want to put all this stuff behind us. And if you're willing to do that, then let's talk. And he said he was totally willing to do that, and let's move forward.
Great.
So I did, I went with numbers, and I said, cause he said, he originally said seven thousand dollars. And I said, well, that's, that seems high, but I'll go back and I'll crunch the numbers, so I did, I crushed numbers. X amount of plowing, how much money per truck, and then I figured the grading also. And I come up with, like, it was like fifty-nine, fifty-six, and we ended up, so we agreed on six thousand. And so that's where we're at. I think it's a no-brainer for Woodbury to take advantage of that.
I think it's great. My only question is, um, timing of plowing. Are, are they willing to make sure that the buses are gonna move through there to get to Hardwick?
Yeah, they, they're, they're there anyways, they're already plowing their portion of the route.
Right, so we're just going a little further up and over?
This, throughout this year, when I was going up there, they were always ahead of me. They were always ahead of me, so, um, there'll be no doubt that they'll be, they'll be ahead of the buses.
So that's a bus room, so they must have bus kids on their part of the road too, okay.
It's the same set of kids. Well, it is.
Essentially, right, right.
Some of them live in Hardwick, some of them live in Woodbury.
Yeah, Hardwick buses go on there.
Right, same school.
And half those kids are going to Hardwick Elementary, and some of them are coming all the way over here to Woodbury, so. Okay. Alfie, thank you.
Yes.
It's really helpful. It's great to, great to have a fresh, great to have a fresh start.
Certainly helps, I act, because it's, now I'm, I'm more can focus here in Woodbury, instead of that half an hour driving up there.
Yep.
Gets me to the schoolyard faster, and gets me to, you know, I've actually taken a few roads over from the other two routes. So it gets their routes done faster, so, uh, it's just, it's just, it's gonna be good.
Just makes a lot of sense.
It's gonna be a lot easier, yeah.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Really helpful.
As long as Alfie's talking, I would like to say that I had to talk to him this morning. I'm very unhappy with what happened last Friday. Now, if anybody else didn't have any trouble, I don't know how the hell everybody was. But he went away, and I don't know who he left in charge, but he's got a man over there that's been working there for twenty years, he should've known what the hell to do. But they didn't plow out that heavy snow on top of the ice, nobody could go anywhere, we had stuck people all over town. He probably just complained, didn't you?
No.
You didn't?
No.
I think you did, no.
Well, I got one from a person who just complains every time he comes to my house every day, but-
The thing, oh, mess, and I guess what I'm getting at point is, he left his man, he had the day off, I tell him that after, he was gone.
Who? Oh, Alfie, okay, yeah, okay.
I was gone for that day.
So it wasn't a matter if I got a hold of him or not, but he's got a man over there that's been there for fifteen, twenty years. So he certainly knows what out there, but, and it didn't happen. Now, why the hell did it, because it, uh, like about one o'clock in the afternoon, they just picked up the lunchboxes and went home. And we got roads you can't travel over, because Friday is a day off, and they have no more responsibility to the roads for Woodbury than that, they can go home. That's, that's what they did. Now, I don't think that should just be let go.
Right, well-
Some people have been seriously hurt, we couldn't have got an ambulance anywhere on the west end of this town.
Right, well, some of it is strategy, like I told you this morning.
It's what?
Strategy.
Yeah.
You know, when it rains and the roads are frozen, if you've got a flat surface, it's gonna turn to a sheet of ice.
Yeah.
If you leave that little coating of snow on there, the snow will soak up the water and prevent it from turning into a sheet of ice.
But your little slope turned into three inches, which the model couldn't do it.
Okay.
So somebody should've been around, it could've been contacted to clean out their roads.
Right, if I was here and I see three inches, I would've, I would've ordered it plowed.
You know, they went up, um, Andrews Hill, and they plowed out a low, and it looks like they just turned around, went back to the garage, and that's it, they didn't go the other way.
Yeah, if they, if they plowed anything, they should've plowed them all.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I had two people stuck over on Tibbetts Hill, and I asked one guy, I said, why'd you get your sand? He said, I dug it out of the center of the goddamn road, what do you think?
Oh, really?
He couldn't get, you know, he couldn't find his sand, where he was, and you got a couple people stucking off the road. It was, it was pretty, it was dangerous. And I bring up the point that the slick persons are hard to reach, because you were gone. And I don't have the telephone number, I do now, but wouldn't have done any good anyway, but we should have a, a place that we can reach people. We're, we're talking about supporting the town, not, not about this other stuff, we, we work for the people, and we seem to forget that.
I don't mean to.
You, you, you're doing things in big time and all that, but you're, you're kind of forgetting the little guy that's back there paying the taxes, and having to put up with this crap.
Well, I'm sorry for that.
And it is crap. We've had some really poor roads, we've had it up here, top where the granite comes out. I know for an instance that I went over the top of that hill one day, and that was before Alfie was here. And it was sanded up to top, all right, yep, and then they went home. Well, I didn't go home, cause when I went over the top, I went sideways about thirty, forty feet, cause it was clear ice. But being me, I drove back to the garage and yelled and hollered, told them what a bunch they were, and your hired man, hey, a woman, whatever, they went and jumped in his truck then, went up and sanded it, but it's on the road up to where Randy lives. That thing, this doesn't get any attention half the time. They will run out sanders good, good and heavy, cause you got trailer trucks, that's fine. Then they'll kick it into a lean layer, and it's so lean you can't even see it sometimes. They're not, they're not familiar with what they're doing, they've been there a long time, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I can say that when I'm sanding, I'm sanding the same, they're all sanded the same. I'm not turning the thing down or up, I'm, they're all equal. And I can, I can mention that. We do, we do spend a little extra time and sand on the hill for the tractor trailers, cause they're carrying enormous amounts of weight, and they need to be, they need to have traction. So that might be what you're seeing up at the top of, of Cabot Road.
Yeah.
Sometimes it does get less. Sometimes we'll just go and sand that, that hill, and turn around and come back, not go all the way to the other side.
Well, that's another, I've got, I don't wanna take up too much of your time, you've got important stuff, but, uh, when your boys pile the top of the hill, they don't turn around and come back, they come over through into Cabot, drive down the blacktop, and then come down over to East Hill. You know, why the hell are we driving the truck with chains on it down the blacktop over there on Route Two or whatever it is, and then coming back down over to East Hill Road?
Well, they don't, they go up Jug Brook. They go up Jug Brook, and they catch, uh, East Hill.
Yeah, but why are they doing that? It's, it's short a distance to turn around right where they are, at the end of our route, by Hugo Amaya just below it. And go back over there and come down here and plow it, you'd be head to gate.
Well, I think it, it makes a difference, it depends on the storm a lot.
Yeah.
Cause if you turn around up there, then you gotta come back down here all the way to the village, and then run the blacktop down to catch East Hill by Woodbury Lake. That's all dirt, that's all dirt to go around Cabot and catch Jug Brook Road to get, to bring you to East Hill.
So they're going right down to the pond, then hanging a right, going down, taking Jug Brook?
Then take another right on Jug Brook.
Yeah.
It just gets the truck over, over there sooner, and, you know, sometimes it's easier to do the loop, rather than come all the way back, and it depends some on the storm, too.
Yeah.
You know, and the timing, which, which is a large part of this decision-making. The time of day, when the buses are coming, you know, how much time we got to get out.
And as long as you've been business, you know it anyway, but some of that stuff that you're telling these people to do, you almost gotta draw them a picture. I mean, you can tell them what to do.
I hated art school. But I'll try, I'll try, I'll work on it, I, I'll work on it.
I, I think you speak to some of the former people, you'll find out, that when they were directed to do a certain thing, they didn't necessarily do that. You know, you, you had a grader operator that graded the west road. So he gets the grader and he drives over the rest of the road, and he grades a while, then he turns around, drive the grader back, down gravel, has his lunch, drive the draver back, over the town, starts from home again, what the hell, you-
Yeah, no, I wouldn't be okay with that, right.
That was before your time, so I won't believe you on that.
Okay. I have big shoulders.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I love talking to you.
I got a big mouth too, sometimes I get fed up, I have to talk to that.
But, as I said this morning, I gave you my, my phone numbers, you have every one of them now, call me anytime.
Yep. I, I think that that's another thing, and somebody else mentioned it, that the town report ought to carry not just the numbers where you got them, you ought to have an emergency list in front of that book for different, for people to pick up quickly and find what they want, but it's the slick men, doctors. You, you can't, you pick up a Hardwick directory, just like that was looking, you, you can spend a lot of time in one of those little books trying to find a person's number. And it's a bit poor, isn't it, if you can't even find anyone?
At least on the, at least on the website, you have both of my numbers.
What?
At least on the, on the website, I don't know.
I don't do websites.
All right, uh.
I've been here too long.
No, it's all right, I'm sorry, I, my, my apologies.
My number's in the book, and I have called Alfie.
We don't have the slickboard numbers or emails.
No, they'll, they'll put them in there.
They're not in the book.
No.
They're only on the website.
I've called Greg before if Alfie wasn't available, but, not, and when you said that I had heard complaints, were you talking about the visits that I got?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know too much.
Okay.
You already did that sometime, I mean, after like, we started three years on the board with me, so I don't know.
Yeah, I learned a few things.
Well.
All right.
I have a lot of stuff, but I don't wanna overload you, cause your, your shoulders aren't that broad.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, call me, like I said, call me, we'll talk about it.
I, I see things that bothers me, because it's not done that way, I've been on these roads, my father was a road commissioner, my brother was, I've been, I mean, everything. So we have a pretty good feeling of what we're walking over.
Yeah.
You know, we got roads in Woodbury that people don't even know are there today, like over at the Four Fours, it'd be right up over the mountain, and we used to work that road.
Wow.
It's, it's something different, I mean, we was, we was doing our own blasting, we was doing everything, I mean, you know, it's different, but. It's a, it's an awful lot of work, and, and it seems like we're wasting an awful lot of time with these damn people with the cars that wanna park beside the road. They wanna get a little piece of land and set where they shouldn't set, and then you're fooling around with the judge and paperwork. And there's, there's gotta be a stronger way to do away with those people, we, you've got more important things to do than dithering around with people cause they park their car, we're supposed to fuck, I mean, something needs to be done. And I, I'm, I'm afraid if, uh, my friend Chuck was here, he would get excited, and probably something would be done, cause he'd probably put the goddamn car right down over the bank and, and to the granite ground over there, but why'd I have to pay for it? Anyway, that's where I'm at.
Well, thank you for your-
I do think we need, we need more cooperation between the slickboard, slickboard and, and the people. You people really like have a tendency to like to make all your decisions, and I know you have to, some of you, in, in your, take your time on your slickboard. I mean, if you've got a decision to make, you, I don't remember well now, getting too old, but you may take that into the back room with it, so the public don't get to hear it. And that's all right in most cases, whether you're talking about personalities or contracts and stuff like that, but other stuff, doesn't need to be hauled to the back room, cause the, the people out of no belt's out there.
Well, we've got this, which we didn't have even ten years ago, which is, you know, a great opportunity for people who wanna know what's going on. Watch HCTV, I mean, even if you don't have a computer, you can watch, oh, you can, well, no, I guess you can't, if you don't have Comcast, no, forget it. It's not gonna work for you where you are.
I believe in it, no.
Yeah.
But, uh, you used to have a couple of, and, Robert and Noah, but they drove a horse and buggy down from Westwood, to attend town meetings. That was quite a trip, the meal between in her, that's what I-
We put their picture in the town report a few years ago, Marsha had some pictures.
Well, I'm glad you can get one the inside of a house. Okay, I'll also, for five minutes, and I might think of something else.
Alfie, anything else that you wanna bring up?
I don't think so, uh, Brandy and I have been kind of working on grants together, trying to get, just so we can get things together. As it goes.
So the valley, so the cover here has not been designed yet?
No, that's the engineering, that's the forty-five thousand.
That's the forty-five K that we have to work on with Michael.
But the, that's not ju, I mean, that's for the whole project, that's not for the design work, right?
That's just for the design work.
It's just the design work.
Forty-five thousand dollars is, oh.
That's, that's what I like to ask you, you can't be asking questions here, but why do we have to have people out of Monk Pegg, uh, telling us what to do, putting the damn cutoff down over the hill up here, right down over, that's, that's plain, all you gotta do is look down, you can see where the roads are gonna go, and you see where the ledge is, you don't worry about that.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna do that this time.
We're not, we're not, we're not doing it.
You're not gonna do it.
Right.
Correct.
Why?
We're not gonna get the state involved, because when you do, you have a lot of, uh, regulations to go through.
There's a lot of oversight.
But when you get the state involved, they'll need to.
That's what, we're not gonna, right.
She's saying, she's not, we're not getting the state involved.
Because the guys have figured it out, between Chuck and Greg and Alfie, they have figured out what they can do on their own without going out for grants. It's gonna use the same, you know, budget, money that's already budgeted, and it should be interesting.
Well, I think Chuck wrote that last year.
Yeah.
Yes, and that, that road it hooked onto was made without a permit from the state. My father made that road, it goes all the way out to the county road, he made it in the winter, cause he couldn't get anywhere, so he made a goddamn road, that's all it done, that's it. The state paid for it, but then, but, I don't know, it's, it's too much, we're not, we're not doing anything for people.
We're not, yeah, with the, uh, things like culverts and stuff, I think sometimes you have to have the state involved, but, but with just moving a road.
When, when we're looking at interconnected, interconnected stream systems. When we're looking at interconnected interconnected stream systems, the state has basically a set of priorities for those interconnected stream systems and the roads that are immediately adjacent to those. If we have recognized those, we can get grant money to help with those systems. If they're not interconnected, then it's up to us.
Yeah.
And then, even if they are interconnected and they can do it better, that's what we do. And we don't go out to the state for anything. But we do have to recognize those interconnected systems because the state expects us to put those on a map.
And also, if the state's gonna pay for it, you know, I mean, sometimes that's a driving factor, too, if there's grant money available. Then we let them say what we can do.
Yeah, that that grant money is very attractive.
Yeah, well, sometimes.
It's, at least you're not paying for it right out of your immediate tax dollars from Woodbury.
Not immediately, but I'm.
Nope, you're paying for it no matter what, sir. So am I.
I was a guy, I had campaigning over here in New Hampshire the other day.
I, uh, just for the record, I would, uh, I would rather not be on the select board, so if you want to take my job anytime, it's yours.
Yeah, you come back twenty-five years later and it's like a whole different ballgame.
Well, I.
Used to be fun.
I've been for sixteen or seventeen years and we didn't get sued too many times.
I know.
We we might have got rough a few times, but we got things done and I'm I'm proud of what we did.
I'm sure.
Still standing today and.
Sounds great.
I I can't see why we're putting more money into some things. Especially when they fail and and right now, I'm not sure you're aware of it, and I'm not positive because I haven't walked it. But what about that big beaver dam up top the hill up there? That we can't touch, and if that lets go, this whole goddamn road's gonna have again, same to before. What can we do about that?
I don't have a straight answer, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you.
I I don't, you know, if the person won't let you onto the grounds, then can the state help you?
Yes.
Help.
Uh, they can help us with remediation and removal of the dam.
Because that's gonna let go again, you know, that's that's beaver's way, they're gonna build it up and it's gonna come down through there and that's pretty expensive.
I agree.
Send Michael up there, I suppose, he could grab them out.
Leave Mike alone for the time being.
Okay, go ahead.
Alfie, are there things that you would like to mention? Seems like you've gotten through most of it. Sounds great. All right, um, it's a little after six forty-five, it's now six, uh, six fifty-six. Crabery Meadow Wetland.
So.
Status.
Yeah, this has been going on for three years, as you all know. And, um, the Ron Husington Conservation Board is ready to give us their ten thousand dollars so we can buy that wetland and preserve it. But there's a bunch of strings, and they're not really strings, they're just procedural things that have to be done, that have to be taken care of, so. I sent you a copy of this grant agreement, Michael. And I also have given you, here is a paper copy with a bunch of notes that are helpful, that shows a lot of the things that are required here. The staff at VHC B have agreed to do.
Thanks.
Because I whine a lot and we, why didn't you tell us all this stuff before, you know? If I could have taken, gone and asked for ten thousand dollars from ARPA money, it would have been a heck of a lot easier, but ARPA money wasn't around three years ago when this whole started, even COVID wasn't around. So, um, you probably want to continue to look at this and maybe when Michael comes back.
Yep, I can't do it without without looking through it and without talking to Michael.
And this, yeah, we've gone through, we could go through bit by bit at some point, but what this grant agreement does is just say, yes, we're still interested and, but they're not gonna give us the money until we do these various things. One of which is a management plan that I'm gonna meet with the Conservation Commission about, I don't know what what we could do as far as management. The first first set of documents that they sent had all this information about forestry and you can only do this and that and all this for, and there's no forest there. So I said, please take this out, they explained that the reason it was all in there, it was boilerplate, because if the town sells it someday, somebody else needs to know, then I said, no, they don't need to know that there's forestry restrictions because there's no
Forests.
place to have a forest, there's no access. This, so anyways, they're rewriting the grant restrictions for me and, uh, maybe we can look at this, I've got another copy for Michael and maybe we can look at it at the next meeting.
That sounds great, I'm happy to look at it at the next meeting after, after I've had a chance to actually.
Having a closing, uh, hoping for a closing in April.
April?
Yeah.
Holy crap, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, it gives us a month and a half, that's nice.
Yeah. There's a bunch of stuff, Chris Green is is representing us on this, the legal stuff, and he doesn't seem to have a problem understanding all this.
Chris Green is doing?
Yeah, Chris Green. So he's communicating directly with the attorney down there and what has to be done.
All right. Anything else about that, Ms. Dany?
Yeah, I could go on and on, but I don't think we need to.
No, I think for now, until we actually get to review it, there's no way to really have this conversation.
Yeah, most of the, you know. There are still a few questions, like they did include some conditions here about the us as the grantor, no, wait.
Or the grantee.
We're the grant.
Grantee.
We're the grantor as far as we buy the property, that makes us the grantee, then that, but then we're gonna sell the conservation easement or give the conservation easement to VHC B, so at that point, we're the grantor, but they're talking about having to provide stewardship and monitoring, and they had told me already that that having by VHC B holding the conservation easement that they're gonna be doing, they're gonna be responsible for the monitoring and stewardship, so I reminded them of that, so they're gonna have to redo this anyways. So.
All right, well, we're off to a start with it.
Yeah.
Really, you know.
It's been three years, it was just before they shut down the nursing home March of twenty twenty, and it was just before that that this whole thing started. Most of the parties have said to die. My mother and the owner were both on the same hall at, uh, Woodridge at the time, so we, you know, started negotiating. And then everything got shut down, so even the attorney couldn't get in there to sign the purchase and sale agreement until the following, until the summer. But, yeah, going.
All right.
Yeah.
So it is seven oh two. Other business.
So I realized that a couple meetings ago, we agreed to pursue that large animal ordinance and I'm just not, can't do it, don't have time to write and go through the whole process, so, um, I thought we could look for a volunteer and I found one already. Yeah. Skip Lindsay said he would work on that.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I started it, so I I've started it, so I will talk to Skip, that's great.
Oh, okay.
Awesome, because when when no one else says yes, the chairman has to say yes.
Oh, really? Oh, man, I didn't know.
The chair has to say yes when no one else says yes. So I'll talk to Skip, that's great.
So we have both, we have, I'll send you both or I'll send him, make sure he has
Yeah, would you please?
copy of the callous ordinance and, um, um, that's a PDF, I think, and I also have a Word document of the callous ordinance. And then there's the article from the Times Argus, I think whoever's writing this should look at the actual court decision because the court did
Yep.
point out some things that were missing.
I got a copy of that, so.
And Skip also had a ordinance, the similar ordinance that he had started working on back when he was on the board, so, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, he's great at that.
All right, um, I'll talk to Skip. And push that forward as best as we both can.
Do you need any, any action on this? Do we need to take any action on this deal with Hardwick?
We don't have to take action on it, I don't think we have to take action on it right now, do we? The assistance agreement?
On the, on the.
Because it's only, it's only a draft, or are we good?
Well, if you want to make changes is what we're looking at.
Okay.
Want to make changes to it.
To the draft, right.
To the draft.
There will be, so we'll have the fiscal year this year, twenty-three, and then we'll have the fiscal year twenty-four, um, contracts. But if you don't see anything that we need to tweak on them, you can email me.
I I I haven't looked over it in detail, so I would rather, I'd, Alfie, if you're okay, I'd rather read it and be good about it.
Yeah.
And then send things to Ms. Brandy and have it, have it be authorized.
Well, we can bring it to them and then if they're satisfied, they sign and we have a legal contract.
I would rather it be reviewed as efficiently as possible.
I think they're probably gonna send us in an invoice for this year.
They're already doing it?
They're, they've already started.
Oh, okay.
They're starting it.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, which is still in, it's in the budget, it's all, it's all, you know, shouldn't be an issue, but that's probably the most immediate thing is if they get a check for the three thousand.
Okay.
They're not gonna be in a rush for the contract.
Gotcha. Okay. That's fair enough. Okay, so, any other business?
Don't look at me, I'm gonna.
All right, no, you can go for yours, sir, I'm sure.
Give me something, I said something.
Yeah, I got a lot of them.
You got a new neighbor yet?
What?
Have you got a new neighbor yet?
I don't know, I don't, I don't know my neighbors, I only met them eight years ago, well, I see them twice, I couldn't have. But you don't come up with a million dollars every, every day.
I know.
Million ten, I think, I don't know if he's gonna sell it now. The people who pay that money don't want it back in the woods, they want it somewhere, oh, they got a scenery and stuff like that.
And other people to see him.
No, and he's, he hasn't got much of a place for doing stuff and he put a
Really?
bundle of work into it.
You've got all the view.
What?
You've got all the view.
Well, I got the view, we had that first.
You've got a great view. But he didn't put his house up high enough, huh?
And my father didn't pay for it like first year, I mean, I had to pay for it all.
Yeah.
Okay, any other business? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting of the Woodbury Select Board for February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three is adjourned at seven oh seven PM.